Do you even show me being there?
I see you there, but I just don't have your video.
Okay, so, because, okay, just ignore it. Okay, I'm trying.
Hi, Janine. Okay, we will start. Aloha, Kako. Welcome to the August meeting of the Kuleo Okalaniiki Neighborhood Board. Hello, Hailani. I'm Clarissa Burkert. I'm the Chair Pro Tem for this meeting. This is an important meeting for us. It's the beginning of the new officer term. So, we will be electing new officers for the next year, deciding on meeting arrangements, etc. So, we have a thirteen-member board. Nine or ten active members. Judy Ann, she's, is keeping track. We have eight vacancies. Our officers have one-year terms. I'd first like to, before we go into electing officers, I would like to thank our former board members. First of all, Steve Lipscomb, our former Vice Chair. He was a very good Chair. He was, he was fair and level-headed, diplomatic, and reliable, and I really appreciate his help. I'd also like to thank Olasusa for participating in the past year and wish her well. I'd also like to thank our veteran members. Sherry Spangler, Janine Johnson. And there's, as you see, we have Kawi Lucas, who is joining us from afar. And thank you so much for being with us tonight, Kawi. Hailani Sanodapale. I don't see Tatiana Reeves yet, or Shelley Ham, but they are also our returning members from last year. Welcome to our new members. Keihau Lani Akiona. Keihau Lani, are you on? Are you listening? Okay, she is represented by her husband, partner Akiona. Welcome, partner. We are, we are so happy to have you join us. Hopefully, Keihau Lani can introduce herself at one of these meetings, because I, we'd all like to get to know her better and have her offer her opinions. So, we will now go to the annual election of officers. Judy Ann, do we have quorum yet, or should we move, should we temporarily move ahead and go to city and state monthly reports?
Yeah, as of right now, we only have seven, so we need nine as a quorum. And we have, actually, our board seats are seventeen. So, we need nine as a quorum at the moment. And right now, we only have one, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, we only have seven. So, hopefully, we'll have a couple more people coming in before we can do that. But we can move on to the, to HF, HF D and HPD as well.
Okay. Hey, partner, can you get Keihau Lani to join us?
I'm, I'm, I'm working on it right now, Chair. She's actually on her way home. She had to pick up our son from work. So, she, she's in, it's in process.
Okay, great. Okay, so, I see that Sergeant Hung is here. Aloha, Sergeant Hung. Do you want to start us off?
Sure thing. Good evening, Board. This, I'll give you a readout to the stats for July. Let's see. We had three motor vehicle thefts in comparison to five the previous month. Five burglaries in comparison to three the previous month. Twelve thefts in comparison to eleven the previous month. And eleven UEVs are theft from vehicle, and it's the same as the previous month. Total calls for service, six thousand two hundred twenty-five. Our safety tip for this month is going to be back-to-school safety tips. There are few things that we like to touch on. Basically, playgrounds. Every year, there's more than two hundred thousand kids that are treated in hospital ERs for playground-associated injuries. We're asking that you check the safety of public playgrounds prior to letting your child play there. You want to make sure that if there is a play apparatus, that there's a list, some sort of media underneath the play apparatus to safely allow them to, a place to fall, so they don't injure themselves. Another safety tip is bicycling. For those parents allowing children to ride bicycles to school, make sure that they're wearing a helmet. They're, they're wearing brightly colored clothing. If they're riding at night, or dusk or dawn, make sure that they have lights and reflectors. Check the tires of the bike for nicks, cuts, and wear before each ride. And make sure the brakes work. Also, it's very important while your child is riding on the street that they obey traffic signals and traffic laws. As far as them just walking home to school, home to the park, or whatever, make sure young children know certain things, and if not, be with them. Realize that they are smart structure or stature. They could be impulsive and may act without realizing the dangers around them. They lack judgment as far as speed and distances of vehicles approaching. And they, a lot of times, they don't understand traffic rules and regulations. That being said, if at all possible, stay with your child while they're walking on public roadways. Just something for the schools, you know, while at school. Make sure you check the weight of their backpacks to prevent strain on muscles and injuries to the spine. Check the inventory of items in the backpack. See what can be left at home to decrease the weight. Make sure that has soft padded straps to maximize comfort. And encourage your child to wear both shoulder straps to better distribute the weight. Finally, jacket and sweatshirt drawstrings. They may look trendy, but they can get caught on a lot of things, including elevators, playground equipment, inside of fans. So, we're recommending is that if they do have drawstrings, that the drawstrings be no longer than three inches long. If it means you have to cut them out or take them out, that'll be better for the child. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Any questions for this month?
Any questions for, for our policemen and for the police department?
Yes, Chair, could I ask Sergeant Hung if he could restate the statistics again? Sorry, I didn't catch them all.
Okay. Motor vehicle thefts, there are three in comparison to five the previous month. Burglaries, five in comparison to three the previous month. Thefts, twelve in comparison to eleven. And UEVs are theft from vehicle is going to be eleven. It's going to be the same as the previous month. And total calls was six thousand two hundred twenty-five.
Mahalo. Thank you for your hand.
Mahalo. Any questions for, for our police?
No question.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sergeant Hung.
Okay, you folks have a nice afternoon or evening.
Yeah, please take care and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
I do not see a fire department representative. Do we have Board of Water Supply? Hello? Am I missing somebody? Oh, Christopher Sugimoto. Hi.
Hey, everyone.
Board of Water Supply. Hi.
Hi, let me share my screen. Hey, hello, everyone. My name is Christopher Sugimoto from the Board of Water Supply. I would like to report that there are no new main breaks last month. Tonight's general water announcements is our 2023 Annual Undersea Plant Sale. That's going to be on this Saturday, August 5th. After three years, BWS will be bringing back its annual Halapa Zerescape Garden Undersea Plant Sale. It will be held on this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Admission is free, includes a variety of local plant vendors and informational booths. You can find out more on our website at www boardofwatersupply.com. And before I open it up to questions or comments, I have something else to report. So, we have an upcoming East Honolulu Watershed Management Plan Public Review Draft Community Meeting. So, it's going to be happening on Thursday, August 24th, from 6:00 a.m., oh, sorry, 6:00 a.m., 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. virtually on Zoom. We've had multiple meetings so far in the past. I believe this is the fourth one, third or fourth one, I think. I will post the Zoom link in the chat for everyone to access the meeting. And I will attempt to upload this flyer to the chat. If not, I'll email the, the board members, and then they can distribute the flyer. And that's it. That's all I have for today. Does anyone have any questions or comments for BWS?
Mr. Sugimoto, could you please try to upload that flyer so that I can send it out?
Yes, if I can't upload it to the chat, may I just email you the flyer?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, perfect. I'll do that right after this.
Thank you. So, how is our drinking water supply for the summer, rest of the summer? How does that look?
It's, we're surviving. We're trying not to overpump a lot of sources, because the Water Commission is getting on our case about overpumping at particular sources. So, we're, as of right now, we're trying to, we're hanging on. We're doing what we can with all the PFAS that's being detected with the whole Red Hill fuel contamination. We're in the process of trying to get new sources up and running, but yeah. I don't think people have to worry about this summer. We got it taken care of.
Are new developments on hold until that problem is solved?
Like new, like construction development?
Yes. My density housing.
Yeah, I, I, in a perfect world, it would, yes, it would be on hold. But Board of Water doesn't have too much say on that. So, it's like, a lot of these plans were already approved beforehand. So, it's, well, we can't not approve them at this moment. So, the best thing we can do is like moving forward. Any new future developments that are coming up in Kakaako, we're going to try and implement some like conservation methods, like catching like stormwater and trying to like reuse it and stuff like that. But the developments that are, the plans were already approved. We can really enforce these new policies with them. Moving forward, like with any other future development, we're going to heavily enforce like water conservation.
Yes, Hailani. Okay, so, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Are, so, I went to the community, the CRI meeting for the de-fueling of Red Hill. It was the Community Representative Initiative where they with, where they're going to implement a community advisory committee for the de-fueling and shutdown and for the remediation of Red Hill. So, one of the things that I noticed when we went there was that Board of Water Supply was not listed as having a seat on there. So, I don't know if you guys are aware of the committee or if you guys are choosing not to participate, or if are quitting for the invitation.
That, I'm not too sure. So, you said the committee was a community advisory committee?
They have state agencies on there.
Okay.
So, I was wondering, they have Sea Worm, the Department of Health.
So, they have everyone but BWS?
But BWS, yeah. So, I thought that was a little concerning, considering that, you know, Ernie's been really important in getting the public informed, keeping us informed of what's going on with the water, and is the expert here. So, they're going to, from what I hear, they're going to start de-fueling in January. But I guess they're going to, I guess, start making real plans or doing the logistics of it starting October. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll definitely.
I would like you guys on, or somebody from BWS on there.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Saying, we did, we did vocalize that at the CRI meeting. Just an FYI, that we want Ernie on there and, you know, somebody, at least someone from Board of Water Supply.
Okay, I'll bring it back, and I'll have a response for you at next month's board meeting.
Okay, you know, I'm wondering whether we should add this to the agenda to find out how the communities can, can, can back the Board of Water Supply, or at least make sure that, that you have a significant say, because it just, the whole thing doesn't make a lot of sense to me, and I just want to know what we can do. Would it, can I add you to the agenda for September? Would, would you be able to talk to us more about the problems that you run into and maybe some suggestions for us?
What kind of problems? You mean like dealing with the, the future development and stuff like that?
Yes, and the current, the ones that have already been approved, given that we have a, a water shortage or water restriction that wasn't foreseen at the time the developments were approved.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll bring that back to our communications and then telling them that you're requesting for kind of like a presentation or like a, just kind of like an update on it. And then, I'll have to reach out to you and then be added to the agenda for next month's board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Sherry has her hand up. Sherry, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't, still on the board, so I didn't know if you could see. This is questions for Christopher. Obviously, I'm confused as to what I heard you just say. You know, Ernie Lausser is our hero, and the Board of Water Supply has such a crucial element into approving or disapproving plans and developments that are happening on this island. And you told, it seems like you said, the Board of Water Supply couldn't nix a plan, or at least voice their displeasure over it. And I'm surprised, because when they want to build over in Moiliili, where there are no good water lines and no good sewer lines, and Kakaako, same thing. I'm shocked if Board of Water Supply doesn't weigh in at least and say, we don't have the capacity in those two neighborhoods to do all this high volume of development. So, can you clarify what you just said about Board of Water Supply not being able to say that?
Yeah, so, the manager, Ernie, so he's, he doesn't have it in his power to nix plans. Like, if we have the capacity, like you mentioned, that we don't in Moiliili, but we actually do have the capacity. So, since we do have the capacity, we have to approve the plan. Like, it, even though we don't like it, like, it's, we should be conserving the water. And if we have the capacity to meet all these like future developments, then we have to approve of it. Like, that's how it is. It goes over Ernie's head. So, it goes down to us, and then we have to, we have to approve the plan. But that's not really my section that I deal with. But I will bring this all back to our communications, and then maybe we'll have someone from that section attend next month's board meeting, and then they can clarify more questions that everyone has. Oh, I'm sorry, you can go.
The, we expect that Board of Water Supply and bodies like DPP, we know that you can't rule out what a governor or a mayor wants to do, but you have, I always believed you had an advisory capacity, and you could at least say, hey, we don't have the capacity for that in that neighborhood, even though you can't override it. I would expect you guys to say it. And that's what I would like clarification on, because I don't like to think that you have been, that you as an agency have been muted, because quote-unquote, you don't have the power. Just like the neighborhood boards don't have the power to override, but we have the, we have the power to voice the community's displeasures over things. We're expecting Board of Water Supply and people like DPP to do the same thing. So, I wish you could clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Member Spangler, I'd just like to remind you to ask to be recognized first and not to address speakers on your own.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, but thank you for your comments. All right. Christopher, we, we would like to be able to discuss this more and, at our next meeting. And I, and we thank you for, for all the information that you've provided us. We find, we do have quorum of members now, and I know some of the board members need to leave. So, I'm going to move ahead to election of officers while we've got everybody on board. Thank you very much, Mr. Sugimoto.
Mahalo, everyone.
We will now proceed to the annual election of officers. And thank you very much, Keihau, and Shelley, and Tatiana, for, for, for coming on. We can now get some business done, and thank you, Shelley. Oh, Shelley, you're on twice. I've got your name in two boxes. Okay. But you only get to vote once. Okay, first is, is the officer, is the office of chair. So, the, we are now open for nominations for a chair.
Okay, Chair, point of order, you'll have to pass the gavel over to someone while you're, while you're, because you're, you're pro tem right now. So, you have to pass the gavel over to someone that can actually conduct you, if you want to be nominated as chair, just to let you know.
Who should I pass it to?
Member Johnson has her hand raised.
Okay. Well, you, Janine, you're in charge now. Yes, yes.
That wasn't why I raised my hand, but okay.
Okay, why, you have your hand up. Please go ahead, Janine.
I wanted to nominate you as chair, but I don't think I can do that now that I have the gavel. So, I'll wait for the nominations.
Okay.
Here.
I don't know how to do this. How do you put the hand up? Sherry's raising her hand but doesn't know how.
Okay, well, I recognize the hands now. Is it Janine? Okay, Janine.
I, my, my thing doesn't say who is who, so it looks like, is it, is it Sherry's?
Sherry. Yes, Sherry. It says Stephanie, but it's her computer. It's Sherry Spangler.
Okay.
I nominate Clarissa Burkert for Chair of the Neighborhood Board, number two.
Or second.
Hailani has her hand up.
Hailani has her hand up.
I, I second that.
How do, can the neighborhood assistant please do the roll call?
Okay, yes, I can. I'm sorry, we're going to have to do the oath of office first, because whoever didn't come to the installation needs to take the oath of office, and then after that, we can do the vote. Is that all right with everyone?
Sure. Who needs, is it Keihau who needs to have the oath of office administered?
No, I think whoever didn't come to the installation on July 1st all needs to be sworn in.
Oh, that includes me, then.
That includes everybody.
Okay, okay.
Except, except member Sanodapale, she's good. And then, I'm not sure who else came, but I know.
Gonzales.
Oh, yeah, and killing Gonzales as well. So, let me get to the oath of office really quick. Hold on one moment. Sorry about that. Okay, everybody raise their right hand.
Okay, don't get in an accident.
She, she's already been sworn in. I actually sworn her in this morning, or this afternoon, so she's good.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws. Constitution and laws.
The State of Hawaii.
Of the State of Hawaii.
The Charter and laws.
The governing laws?
The chartering.
We didn't hear you.
I'm sorry, we hit them. The Charter and laws.
The Charter.
The Charter. Charter and laws.
Of the city and county of Honolulu.
Of the city.
Of the city and county of Honolulu.
And the provisions of the neighborhood plan.
And the provisions of the neighborhood plan.
And will conscientiously.
And.
And will conscientiously.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
My duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best.
To the best of my abilities.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the neighborhood board.
Of the neighbor.
Of the neighborhood board.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Now, everybody can vote.
So, we have a, we have a nomination. We have a second. Are you going to do roll call, or do we just do?
I can do roll call. So, this, so, this is for Chair of the, of the Neighborhood Board Kuleo Okalaniiki, which is Clarissa Burkert. Keihau Lani. Or, yeah, you can say yes, no, that's same.
Yes.
Okay, a member Akiona, partner?
Aye.
Okay, member Burkett?
Aye.
Member Ham?
Aye.
Member Johnson?
Aye.
Member Lucas?
Aye.
Member Reeves?
Aye.
A member Sanodapale?
Aye.
A member Spangler?
Aye.
Okay, so that is nine votes. And Chair Burkett, you are chair again. Mahalo.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone. I'll do my best.
You can, you guys are going to keep me in line.
Thank you, Clarissa.
Okay, let's go to Vice Chair. I guess I've got the gavel back. For Vice Chair, I would like to nominate Kawi Lucas. May I take other, are there other nominations? Yes, partner?
I second that.
Okay.
Okay, does that mean we don't take other nominations? Did anyone else want to nominate themselves or somebody else?
Member Johnson has her hand up.
Janine?
I vote, we close the nominations. I vote.
Okay. Judy Ann, would you please take roll call? Vote by roll call.
Roll call vote for Vice Chair for to be Kawi Lucas. Keihau Lani? Member Akiona? Member Akiona, partner?
Aye.
Chair Burkett?
Aye.
Member Ham? Member Ham?
Aye.
Member Johnson?
Aye.
Member Lucas?
Aye.
Member Reeve?
Aye.
Member Sonora Pale?
Aye.
A member Spangler?
Aye.
Okay, so that's nine. And Member Lucas is Vice Chair. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, that, yes, you can relax now. Okay, we, let us move on to the election of the nomination for Secretary. I nominate Janine Johnson.
Second.
You know, Janine, that you're the best. We can't, we can't think of anybody else but you. Okay, let's, let's go ahead and take the vote by roll call. Janine Johnson for Secretary.
Okay, this roll call vote is for Janine Johnson as Secretary. Member Akiona, Kei Hao Lani?
Aye.
Member Akiona, partner?
Aye.
Chair Burkett?
Aye.
Member Ham?
Aye.
Member Johnson?
Aye.
Member Lucas, Vice Chair Lucas?
Aye.
Member Reeve?
Aye.
Member Sonora Pale?
Aye.
Member Spangler?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Secretary Johnson is elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. All right, this is gonna be one board this year. Ah ha, this is gonna be great. Okay, Treasurer, we, we don't really know the role of Treasurer. Judy Anne, should we still nominate someone for Treasurer even? Okay, all right, even though we haven't called upon them to do anything. Okay.
We should have some, we're still redefining the Treasurer position, but any board legally has to have a Treasurer, any board, so, yeah.
Okay, I would like to, the nominations are now open for the Office of Treasurer. I would like to nominate Sherri Spangler. Nominations are open. Janine?
I second.
Okay, Judy Anne, please. Well, how about all in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay.
We have to do a roll call vote, so.
Oh, we do? Oh, okay. I was trying to make it faster. Okay.
This is a roll call vote for Member Spangler to be Treasurer. So, Member Akiona, Kei Hao Lani?
Aye.
Member Akiona, partner?
Aye.
Chair Burkett?
Aye.
Member Ham?
Aye.
Member Johnson?
Aye.
Member Lucas?
Aye. Aye.
Member Reeve?
Aye.
Member Sonora Pale?
Aye.
And member Spangler?
Aye.
Okay, so the ayes have it. Thank you, Member Spangler as Treasurer. All right.
Well, congratulations to all of our new officers. And I have confidence that this will be a very well-functioning team and look forward to working with you. Okay, as we, as you know, we have a bunch of vacancies. Judy Anne, how many do we have?
Okay, so as of right now, we have Sub District 1, 2, and 5 with one vacancy. Sub District 6 has two vacancies. Sub District 7 has one vacancy and Sub District 8 has one vacancy. And we recently got a resignation from former member Steve Lipscomb, so he is Sub District 3. I do have one person that's available that I just verified his information for the Sub District 3 vacancy. The thing is, I know it was the 31st that, that Steve resigned, so I wanted to double check with partner, this member Akiona, if that's, if we can actually nominate him this, today, this month or next month.
From my understanding, because he's not, well, not he, because the sub, the sub-district vacancy is not on the agenda, we would need to add it to the agenda, which then means we need two-thirds vote from the board, which we don't have.
Yeah.
Right, so in essence, the best thing to do is, you know, since he's vetted already, you know, just keep him informed and have him attend the, the September meeting and then, you know, it'll be on the agenda and then we can move forward from there.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
I would like to, okay, Janine, go ahead.
I apologize. I thought we had a smaller board and now we have a big board again. When we went through the pandemic, we had gotten smaller and now we're back to being big and I don't know if we can make this quorum all the time if we're gonna stay at this size. Can we go back to our smaller size?
So Chair, I can, I can adjust that. So what it is, is the, when we were smaller, that was just a temporary reduction of the, of the board. And actually, that was long overdue that we had to go back to regulars, so we decided to go back to the regular size, which is 17, the beginning of this election. So what we can do is we can either, we can do one or two things. I know that we were just, I was discussing this with my deputy director today, actually this morning. The first thing we can do is probably make every, make all the positions that are available at large and see how that falls, so we can request to make it all at large, so we have people in the community try and apply or volunteer for those positions. And if that doesn't work out where we'll have it for like a few months and nobody's volunteering, then we can reduce it maybe by next election. So at least we can give it enough time, like at least a year to see that it really isn't because it's not at large, it's because it's actually too big of a board, if that's okay.
I would like to have further discussion on this matter at the next meeting. Can we do that and have everybody think about it? Genie Ota, go ahead.
Thank you. I think the question I have is, I'm confused as to what seats are open and what sub-districts. So if we could have that all lined up, I'd appreciate it because it's very difficult to make that decision not knowing which sub-districts have the openings. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we should table it till next meeting. Hailani, go ahead.
I support the idea of doing at-large positions just to get, at least we're gonna get a community voice on the, on the board. Thank you.
Okay, Ali?
I, I was wondering about the "we decided" and how that, how that happened. I mean, I don't know who the "we, we, we" is.
Okay, so before I actually became an NA, it was reduced already. So from what I was told by the NCO, by our directors and by my department, that because it was temporary and it was something that should have been addressed earlier, but now because of the elections, because of the brand-new elections, we have to go back to the original size. And that's something that were, I clarified with my, with my director and my deputy director. Yeah, because it was just a temporary. Historically, when we checked, it was just supposed to be temporary, it was only supposed to be three months, not two years. Of this, of this, as of July 1st. So this is like the 23, 25, you know, installation. Of the neighborhood, all the neighborhood boards that got elected, the 23 to 20, 20, 23 to 20, 25 installation, the one that we're in right now, we are gonna go all to, all back to the original sizes of the boards. Because it was a temporary fix two years ago for this board.
Sherri Spangler? Sherri, you have your hand up?
Okay, yes, I'm sorry. This is really fun. We're still trying to get onto the screen. Years ago, I was also of the opinion that, that at-large seats were good. But then we had some experiences with the Kahala neighborhood, the Wailei Kahala Neighborhood Board. They had one or two at-large seats and all the problems of the board always were generated from the people who sat in the at-large seats. And it was, it got political because they didn't, the people at large, at least in this incident in Wailei Kahala, they didn't care about people's neighborhoods. They kind of voted politically. I don't even know how to explain it, but it was always a problem and I thought, whoa. And that was my education kind of the hard way, because up until that point, I thought it was a good idea. And I wish I could explain what had happened, but we found out that the at-large seats never really cared how their vote went and when things were really very important to the people who lived in that community. So anyway, anyway, I'm not, I wouldn't be for at-large, only because of what I learned from the Kahala experience. Thank you.
Okay, and please bring that up again when we discuss this more at the next meeting. Shelley?
So regardless of whether it goes at-large or by sub-district, is there going to be community outreach for recruiting people or are we just gonna hope they stumble in?
No, I, well, I think we need to do a better job of advertising the Neighborhood Board to those sub-districts so that they consider joining us, sending us a representative. Yes, thank you for that suggestion. Genie? Genie Ota?
So let me just add that it was the board that requested the reduction in the number of members, because at some time ago, we couldn't conduct meetings because there weren't, the board was not able to make quorum because of the size of the board. So at that time, the board voted to reduce the size of the board temporarily and combine some sub-district seats. That request was approved at a Neighborhood Commission meeting, but it was temporary. And so the board was supposed to go back to the Neighborhood Commission to, you know, make permanent any changes, but I think, so that's what Judy Anne was talking about. The Neighborhood Commission had approved a temporary, temporary fix so that the board could meet and make quorum and, and vote on issues. Without that temporary reduction, no business could be held. So that was the, the history of how it became smaller. So, so I think this is a really a bigger discussion. And, and, you know, board members are correct. I think outreach is needed and I think people need to be asked to participate, if you can think of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kawi? Kawi Lucas?
Judy Anne, could you, I just wanted to know the name this, because of your, of the Neighborhood Commission Officer. I just, you gave us his title, but I always feel better, there's like a name, I have three questions, so that was one. And then, so when we just did this, this election, the, the election was for this larger number? Of, okay, and we just didn't notice. And then is there a mechanism for us to continue what Genie, to propose for the, for our board, what Genie Oda said we did before and just have it be ongoing and not temporary?
Okay, Chair, I'm gonna, may I respond?
Yes.
Okay, so my deputy director is Dylan Whitezel. He is, he's the deputy director for our, our department, our Neighborhood Commission's office. Number two, Genie Ota's right in regards to, it was only temporary, it was, it was approved by the Commission temporarily and we just never, I, as a NA, I honestly didn't know personally that we had a larger board when I got on two years ago, when I ended up getting your eyes, you guys as a board. So I didn't know it was a temporary thing until probably a few months ago when we started doing the elections. I know we already had a quorum problem in the past, but it ordered for the Commission to, to reduce the board, you would have to do another request by the board for them to reduce.
Okay.
Yeah. And that can be something that can be put on the agenda next month, if maybe, as a recommendation.
Judy Anne, could you do us the favor of putting the, 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 the name of our Neighborhood Commission Officer in the chat? I had a little trouble hearing you.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Sherri, one more question and then we will move on to our, because Sherri's in upcoming meetings.
I don't know that Sherri had her hand up. She stepped away. Hold on.
Okay, the hand is, well, I see her hand up, so.
Take Sherri's hand down and thank you very much.
Okay. It's now time to decide when we're gonna have our meetings and what our rules are going to be. And I'll first go over what we are currently doing. So the date and time of our meetings are the first Thursday of the month and we are starting our meetings at 6:00 PM. Does anyone want to change those times? It's there, shall we initiate discussion? Does anyone move to discuss those times or is everyone good with them? I'm in that day. Yes, Hailani?
I move to accept that, that time and the day of the week. Thank you.
I'd like to do a vote by, can we do a vote by voice call or by voice? Yee, yee, nay, or ay, ay? Ay and no?
If you guys could do a raise hand vote, that would be great because all of you guys are mostly online and I can see if Member Gonzales is here and so I can see him raise his hand as well.
Okay, I just can't see Sherri and, and Kei Hao.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of keeping the same date and time, please raise your hands. Sherri? What is, Sherri, what is your vote?
Same date and time.
I, okay.
I, I'm, I'm here. I was just wondering, would anybody be interested in moving it back to seven? I I'm I'm here. I was just wondering, would anybody be interested in moving it back to seven? Otherwise, I'll vote for six, however the board wants it. But could we consider moving it back to seven? Is everyone happy with six?
How about six thirty?
Six thirty is better.
That's even better. It just depends how the board wants it. I'll go along with the board, but I would love it later.
If we start later, it means we finish later.
It's okay.
Have to know.
Well, you know, like tonight, we had, we had these Mason Masonry workers here and we couldn't leave.
Too much.
It was just too early to, I would otherwise have been there at the clubhouse. So it just gets a little bit tight, six o'clock. Whatever, I'll I'll go with the board. I don't know what to say.
Judy Anne, help us to resolve this issue. Shall we take another vote?
Yep, um, what we can do is we can do a raise hand vote for six thirty.
Okay.
Kevin, so six, seven.
So all in, let's see, all in favor of moving the time to six thirty, please raise your hands. Okay.
Okay, as of right now, I only have five and the quorum is, oh, six, okay.
Okay, everybody take their hands down. Okay, all in favor of keeping the time at six o'clock, please raise your hand.
Can we vote more than once?
Um, no. That kind of defeats the purpose. But um, let's see. So right now, six thirty only has one, two.
No, this is for six o'clock.
Oh, this for six o'clock, I apologize. One, two.
Anyone else for six o'clock?
There's only three for six o'clock. So and that's not quorum either, actually four, right? So. So the as of right now, if four votes for um six o'clock, the rest cannot vote for six thirty. We'd have to either vote again for six o'clock and again for six thirty, because we need a quorum vote.
What is the quorum again? Sorry.
So the quorum is nine. The quorum is nine. We have, we have, we have ten now.
So we pretty much all have to come to a almost unanimous decision.
Yes.
The only reason I say six thirty over six o'clock is that I I work on the winward side and if I do want to come to a meeting in person, it's really hard for me to get there in time. I usually have to log in on my phone before I walk in the door.
Okay, so um, is there any other point of discussion? My thought is that it was harder for people with children to stay later. It was, it was easier for them to be able to leave and put there, especially the one, the parents with little ones to be able to put their kids to sleep. We had one member who or whom that was a deciding issue and and resulted in her resigning from the board with the bedtime with her with her young child. So um, just something to think about. So our meetings are two and a half hours long and so if we change from six to six thirty, it would mean ending at eight, wait.
Nine.
Nine. Okay. But I'm willing to go along with whatever is better for everyone else. I'm just thinking of the parents with young children. Okay, so let us vote one more time. So please, everyone who would like to have the time changed to six thirty, please raise your hands. Okay, well, that looks like the majority. I will go along with that.
For six thirty, okay. Okay, member Gonzales said it's a he's he's he'll go with whoever with whatever.
Okay.
So majority vote for six thirty. It looks like everybody's hand is raised. Yeah.
Is there anyone who would have trouble attending meetings if the time were changed to six thirty? Just, okay, put, um, those who vote, I see three hands up. Does that mean that you would have trouble attending meetings if the time was, it was made a little later? No?
Let us know.
Kali, are you okay with six thirty? You have to be, Sherry, are you okay with six thirty?
Yes, yes, I'm okay with six thirty.
Okay, so six thirty it is.
Okay.
Okay, the next issue is, um, well, location currently is is in-person at the Allahuai Golf Course Clubhouse and that's temporary. We're working on that, trying to get a closer location. So that's not, we're not gonna vote on that, but the question is, shall we keep the the format in as a hybrid format? Or um, some boards want only to meet in person or do we want to change to in-person? Partner, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I move that we stay hybrid, just because of basic accessibility purposes for for some of our current board members.
Okay. Second. We have a second? Okay, so um, let's do a raise hand vote for all of those who are in favor of keeping the meetings in a hybrid format. So if you agree, raise your hand.
Okay.
Sherry, I don't see your hand.
Member Gonzales, it's okay, so we can.
My sister is having a discussion with me, so I missed what it is. I mean, trying, having a fight here. What were you discussing?
Okay, Sherry, are you in favor of keeping the meeting format in in hybrid, I mean, as hybrid? So um, having a choice, huh?
I think hybrid is good to have, like we're using it tonight, but I I personally will be attending in person and I hope everyone else will try to also. But sure, hybrid is good and convenient for people who need it, yeah. But hopefully people will come back.
Okay, so we will stay in the hybrid format. Okay, the next um vote pertains to rules. It's important, okay, hands down, including my own. So last year, we decided that we wanted to give to have a time limit to for our speakers so that everyone has a chance to speak. And so we, we had all speakers allowed two minutes for their comments. Those giving reports to keep their um, the reports under three minutes and presenters to five minutes. Also, the rules of speaking that to raise your hand when you want to be recognized and to wait until you're recognized by the chair in order to address comments to the chair. So that way, that way, we we don't have people yelling at each other and we're, we give everyone the respectful amount of time. So the vote now is to keep our, to to keep time limits for our speakers, for those giving reports and for presenters. All in favor, please raise your hands. So all in favor of keeping the rules that we had last year relating to speaking?
Okay, the I have it. We'll keep the rules the same.
Thank you. I saw a comment briefly, but then it disappeared. Um, please, if it, oh, wait, I'm looking.
My question was, um, supporting of the rules, but can you clarify who is responsible for like keeping track of those times?
Okay, that is a good segue into um, requesting a volunteer to be timekeeper. Because it's very, the timekeeper's role is very important. Does anyone volunteer to be the timekeeper for the next year? And I can send you helpful hints on how to be a timekeeper if you if you've never done that before.
I can volunteer to do that.
Who is that speaking?
Tatiana.
Thank you, Tatiana.
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, isn't there, is there a a feature on uh WebEx that shows a a time? It would be, it would be better if there was that kind of neutral. I mean, it wouldn't work for the people in the, well, it would also work for people in the room because they they would see it on the screen. But I was wondering if somebody who's WebEx savvy knows where there's a timer. I would assume there is. Um, would still need somebody to say something, but that way, that way, everybody can see it and it seems less personal, you know?
Yeah, does anybody know how to do that?
Chair, may I respond?
It's a good idea, though. Yeah, Judy Anne.
Okay, so I, yeah, oh, okay, member Reed is Googling it. Um, the other thing is I know that one of the other boards, Waimanalo, they do do a timer and they have it on, they share it on the screen. There is some difficulty sometimes with Olaloe with the way that they have to record it. Um, but that's something that I'm not really familiar with. Um, but just in case, that might be, that might be a possibility. But if we can find a way for next month to start timing it and just let me know and I can try and put that feature on WebEx as well.
Thank you. So Tatiana, can you look into that?
Can do.
Oh, thank you, Janine. So is this how it's done? That's cool. How do you enable it to do that? Well, you have to teach us. Or um, can, Janine, you put this up, can you, um, Tatiana, are you familiar with this?
That's the link I put in the chat. I'm reading it right now, so I'll, I'll have it ready next time.
All right, fantastic. Um, so let's go on to deciding what our recess months are gonna be. Up to, um, our favorite recess month has been January. Judy Anne has suggested that we put in a second recess month to kind of break up the calendar and also to um, to to do what more neighborhood boards do to take the same time, the same months off that other neighborhood boards do. Those are the months when not much is happening. And when people, when when it's the start of summer vacation and and families have have more that more that they want to do together. So she proposed May or June. I, Espin and I usually travel June, July, so I would go for June more than May. But um, let me open discussion on this. What month would be, well, okay, let me put it this way. If we were to choose May for, um, who would that be a good month for? Can you raise your hand? Not so good. How about June? Please raise your hand if June would be a good month for um, us to take recess. Okay, it looks like June is better. Okay, is there anyone for whom June would be a problem? Doesn't look like it. Okay, so.
Chair member Spanger has her hand up, sorry.
Yes.
Try again.
Clarissa?
Yeah, go ahead, Sherry.
Okay, I incorrectly raised my hand. I was trying to speak about month. I'm not for June. The only reason we always take July is that July fourth is a big holiday and we meet at the very beginning of the month and that all coincides with people taking off Friday, you know, or or Monday and
Bundling their days.
Our, that July uh date is a very bad one for our board, as is July, as is January first. So if we were to do it, I would put my, my concept is for, if we do two months, January and then then July, because of July fourth, people, they cook on all kinds of extra days to that, those vacations. Thank you.
Okay, so the issue was the July fourth weekend and and um, so I want to know if there's, do we have any more discussion about choosing July instead of June? Pardon?
Jul, next year, July fourth is on a Thursday. So wouldn't, wouldn't we meet on the eleventh anyway? How does that work?
Chair, I can respond to that, if that's okay?
What?
I can respond to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So if we change the date for a for a board, um, we would have to see if the NCO has availability for that. Because as of the second Thursday, I know I'm not available. I have another board that I have to conduct. So it wouldn't be the next month. I mean, it wouldn't be the next week. I'm not available. Um, but I know member Akiona wanted to make a motion on something as well.
Go ahead, partner.
Thank you, Chair. Um, in regards to board recess, um, I moved that the board recess in January twenty twenty-four and then June twenty twenty-four. Reason being is because although our meeting is at the beginning of the month, the legislative session will end at the beginning of May, therefore, we can be present for all those final reports. And then, as most of us know, um, ledge representatives don't usually come during June. Also, Judy, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding about voting for recesses is we is we can only vote for recesses within this first half of the term. We cannot carry over into the second half of the term. Therefore, we can't vote on a July recess.
That's correct.
Partner, I didn't hear what your second, um, the second proposed month was.
Uh, Chair, my my second proposed month is June.
Okay, June. Okay. Um, Kali, you had a comment. I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Um, yeah, it's funny. Uh, I work at the legislature, so that's why I was, um, didn't uh want to take, uh, anyway, uh, so if we take June off, the uh, then we have the problem with July still. And um, I, I don't know that um, the electeds giving reports is 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 so dependent on the legislature being in session. But for me personally, it would be uh fine. I think that the the rhythm of having the meetings is important. So that was why I thought July was good, because we're gonna have the problem of it being moving around.
Okay, so we have, we really, the two months we're looking at is June and July and partner indicated that July is in the next part July is in the next part of the, is in the next year, the next term. So how can we resolve this problem? I
Chair, can I speak?
Yes.
Okay, so normally what we can do in a year is we can actually have up to three recesses. We cannot vote for July only for the fact that that's new session. That is a new year that people get, that, that's considered voting on. So anything up until June 2024, we can have a recess. We can have three recesses from July 2023 to June 2024. We cannot have recesses back to back. Um, but we can have three recesses in one year.
When can we vote on, on July then if we just, if we just hold off for now and, and select January and just hold off on, on the later recess?
You can only vote for July in July technically. So you would have to come in and, you would, you would have to, um, it would have to be in a new session. So.
New session meaning that we have to, July also has to be initial convening meeting. So how can we have initial convening meeting and be on recess?
Um, either.
Sounds like we ought to hold off till August and just leave June and July be. I mean, just, just recess for, for either June or July and then have our initial convening meeting in August like we did this year.
Um, Chair, Partner has his hand raised.
Yes, Partner. Help.
Thank, thank, thank you, thank you, Chair. Um, in light of the current conversation, I'd like to rescind my initial motion and, um, offer up a new motion of the board adopting just the January 2024 recess.
Overdorated, one of them now.
Okay, thank you. Motion's seconded. Elani, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna second it.
Okay. So all in favor of recessing in January 2024, please raise your hands. All in favor of January? Do we have everybody, Judy Ann?
Yep, we have everybody, including member Gonzales. He shook his head yes.
Okay, so what else? Recess months. Um, okay. Easy is the next one. Approval of regular meeting minutes from June 1st. If there are no amendments to the minutes, the minutes are approved. Are there any amendments? If not, the amendments are approved.
Clarissa?
Yes, we, we did those. Yeah.
What are you, Cherry? You're talking about the amendments, not the, not the, uh, we're not talking about the, oh brother. The, um, minutes. Which motion are you making right now?
This is to approve the minutes from our last meeting in June.
Ah, yes, I do have a correction.
Yes.
Um, I sent it in to Judy Ann. The, uh, everything's fine except for how the vote tallied up. So the correction is, oh.
Member Spanger, I got that correction. That's the eight zero zero one, correct?
Yes, I'm just stating it for the board's, uh, edification. On page two, on page two of four, down where we talked about the, um, vote for the traffic study. Reeves moved and Ham seconded. That's a traffic study resolution for Kalani Anioli Highway speeding and safety issues be adopted. Motion was adopted eight zero zero. Um, the, the eight zero zero is the correction, but I thought you should write that whole sentence in so that anyone reading the corrections in the minutes would know what we were talking about. Cause in the, in the minutes, it says seven zero one. It should be eight zero zero.
Yep, I did, I did change it already.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted the board to know too.
Okay.
I see some hands up. Do these relate to last, um, to the minutes from the last meeting or other issues? Yes, Kevin Mulkern? We misspelled your name and I apologize.
That's okay. It's a holy name. It's hard to spell, so that's okay. Yeah, um, with regards to the minutes, um, and, and this has to do with the, uh, police department. It says questions, comments and concerns followed. Um, police in Renton, resident Mulkern made comments regarding police force in Renton, Washington. It, as many of you are new board members, um, in 2000, um, almost 23 years ago. Um, and since then, the board has been asking HPD to give us a little information on the number of arrests, um, that they make each month. Um, when I was in Renton, um, I asked that question. And within 48 hours, I got a response. It told me exactly how many felony arrests they made that month and how many misdemeanor arrests. So it, I think it's important to, 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 I guess, add a little background there. So, um, I was, I was kind of impressed that the Renton Police Department responded to a non-resident within 40 hours where HPD has not responded to a resolution that the board has passed twice um, in 23 years. So, um, anyway, I just, I thought, think that should, I think the minute should be modified so that uh, people understand, um, that we've been waiting patiently to find out how well the police do each month. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other comments? Before we move on to public input for items not on the agenda. Okay, so, um, thank you very much for helping set the, the tone for, for the meetings and in the next year. Really appreciate your input. Now, um, we come to the partner agenda where the public is invited to, tell us what concerns you have or what you'd like us to, um, to fix or look into. Do we have anybody from the public who has a question or a concern, something they want to bring up? Okay. Jeannie Ota?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to bring to the board's attention and I hope that, uh, one of the, um, elected officials, representatives can, um, take note. A few months ago, the board, um, voted against, uh, the application for a conditional use permit for, um, the dish wireless system. To put an antenna up at five two five seven Kalani Anioli Highway. They asked for a conditional use permit approval and also to approve, um, a height variance. I noticed that the Dish people have applied for a building permit. So I'd like the DPP to let this board know. Uh, because it was, they voted against the, the conditional use permit. What's the status of that permit application? And what the status is for the height variance? Um, as you recall, the board had suggested that they use the, um, across the street and place the antenna where all the other cell antennas are on a commercial building, not in residential area. Thank you.
Jeannie, weren't they gonna put it on top of the school and now they're gonna put it on top of the, that business building? Is that the change?
No, no. We asked them to put it on the business building.
Yeah.
Their, their application was for across the street on the ocean side in, on residentially zoned property on the school building.
Right.
That permit, the permit application is for that same property.
The school?
Yeah.
Oh.
So that's why I'm asking DPP what the status is.
Okay. Is anyone from DPP here or who can speak for DPP?
Or maybe the mayor's rep can find out.
Hey Judy Ann, can you pass that on to, to John? Because the mayor's rep, the mayor rep is not here tonight. He wasn't able to come.
Clarissa?
Yes.
Do you see my hand?
I see your hand.
Okay.
Our computer said to first, um,
It's about what Jeannie Ota said.
She was first. Now you're, you're next.
Okay.
So, um, I first just wanted to ask if there's someone who can speak, who can answer, um, Ms., Ms. Ota's question about the status of the permit application. Do you have an answer to that, Cherry?
No, I'm asking to, I wanted to ask Jeannie or you. Do we as a board have to write a letter to DPP to get them to respond? Or is asking John Nucci good enough?
Well, if John Nucci was here, um, he could address that question. Is there anyone else who can help us with that? Or should we write a letter? I guess that's the question. Okay, not hearing any responses from our representatives. Um, it sounds like we need to draft a letter to get a DPP response. Jeannie, can you help us with that?
Uh, Chair, may I speak? Sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I have actually Adam Do and, um, Council Chair Waters here that can address that.
Oh, great. Hey, Adam, can you help us?
Where's Adam?
They're coming.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, aloha Chair, Council Chair Waters. It's great to see you. You wanna sit, you wanna sit in a better position so that we can see you and you can see us?
No, 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 you sit down. I'm, I'm good. Um, I can help you folks with that. I'll find out. And I report back to you all.
Okay.
I don't have that information on me, but I'm happy to help out, figure that out.
Oh, you're great. We really appreciate it.
Alright.
Okay, um, do we have any other questions from the public? Kevin, are you, do you have a concern for the public or for the board? As a member of the public, but it's confusing with you, Kevin, because you've been a member of the board and, and you participate regularly. So it's almost like you're part of our family. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, that, thank you. And, and I am kind of passionate about what you do and that's why I, uh, I participate. Um, and to try to be very tactful. Um, I realize how important it is to spend, I guess, probably a little more than an hour uh, set, setting up the agenda for the year. You know, that has to be done. Uh, but one of the reasons I decided not to participate on the board is I was hoping to get more involved with the Inahaina Community Association. They, from what I understood, they have a stream committee. And I was very passionate about trying to, um, I guess, uh, affect some changes on the way the stream is being managed. I, I sent my dues into the organization. I, I think, um, toward the end of last year, I've been trying for, I think this is what the eighth month, uh, for eighth months, eight, eight months, trying to get together with the stream committee unsuccessfully. I've tried to present some ideas to them and, um, I, I'm, I'm a little concerned on that they may not be representing the community. Um, and what I mean by that is, and to use maybe my mom who recently passed away and I, I don't need sympathy. She was 102 and she had a great life. But I don't think the Inahaina Community Association ever reached out to her to ask her what her positions were. So I guess what I'm trying to say is I'm not, uh, they're, they're not run like the neighborhood board. Um, there are, I believe, individuals, I think four, that represent Inahaina. Um, they were elected by the residents of Inahaina. Um, they, they are very open and transparent, parent. Uh, but with regards to the Inahaina Community Association, um, it seems that it's a group of individuals that have very, uh, personalized views. Um, I don't think they represent the Inahaina community. And if they, they don't have time to get together with me over the last eight months regarding the stream. And when I did confront them regarding their, their agenda for the stream, they said they did not have one. And so I was a little surprised. I'm going to be asking them to refund my money. I think it's only $10. Um, but, um, I do want my money back and I'd like to find out, um, how they're spending the money they collect because they should be open and available, uh, to members' input and concern. I, I, just as I'm a member of this board and, and listen to my windbag remarks on a regular basis and thank you. Um, I, I think, um, a member of an organization should have a voice in it. And if one offers to serve on a committee, um, yeah, they should say, hey, thanks, you know, free labor. So anyway, that's just my, my, my two cents, but I, I'm still passionate about the stream and I did send, um, um, got, um, uh, Judy Ann Smith, um, a two-minute video of a tractor that I took, took a picture of, um, cutting grass, um, on the Poli Highway. Um, and that type of equipment could be used on the Inahaina stream very efficiently to keep the vegetation in control. One person could operate the tractor and it could be done on a regular basis. So if she would share that video with the board, I, I think you'd be impressed with what kind of equipment is available. Thank, thank you so much for your, your time.
Do we have a response to, to Kevin's, um, concern and frustration? Jeannie, do you want to take this offline? Okay.
Um, yeah, I think this is an inappropriate time for this and, um, um, I'll just tell you that description of what happened is incorrect and I don't agree with that. So let's just say that, um, we have a different viewpoint.
Okay. Um, I see a hand up. Alfred Maderos?
Hello, my cocko. Um, I am the Vice President of and I'm in full support of Mr. Kevin Mulkerny and his stance at everything. Um, Kevin, please contact us, either myself or Hailani Pale as well. Um, let us help you with this stream. Let us help you with this whole process of everything. If you need somebody to Malama and take care of that, we're here to help. That's what the community is all about. Um, I want to inform everybody that we've been in a steady progress with, with the Wa Lupe area. Um, that is of concern to everybody in the Inahaina District to Kuleo Ti everywhere else. Um, this past Sunday, we were part of our first ever event to inform everybody what's going on with the Wa Lupe burial grounds that we've been protecting and also the transition to hopefully pretty soon with the help of Mr. Tommy Waters, the council member, for us to be the stewards of that land permanently. So mahalo to everybody who's been in support of us and Kevin, we'd love to support you and help you anyway. And I feel it's wrong that Jean Ota is, her stance is that way. It's very rude that the way she's been lately. I'm not too sure how we can remove her from her position, but she doesn't seem to be in position for the people. And that's what I personally believe in and what I've been seeing and noticing. For somebody to come on saying it's not the right time, this is the right time. It's always the right time for the people to speak up of the neighborhood and the community, especially during a neighborhood board meeting. So, um, yeah, that's, that's my point of view with it. And also mahalo to everybody in this neighborhood board that's been in support of us and it helped us through the process of us, um, preserving, um, a place that was desecrated, a place that needs to be preserved for our ancestors and for, so mahalo.
Mahalo, Mr. Maderos. Mia, go ahead. I, sorry, I saw your hand up and then it went down. Go ahead. It's, it's all yours now. Oh, can I hear? We cannot hear you. Talk louder. Turn on your mic. Hello? Cannot hear yet. Oh wait, you're, you're on mute. Can Judy Ann, okay, now try. Oh, man. Oh, man, still can't hear you. Um, what should we do to help her? What, what do you think, partner, Judy Ann?
We can, can she type in her comment in the chat?
Okay.
Because our volume is fine here. We got, we can't hear you. I'm, I'm sorry about that.
I'm sorry. Shelley Ham, go ahead.
So regarding the Inahaina Community Association, is it outside of our scope to request information from them with the member details, the minutes and the, the scope of the work they're doing?
Of course. Jeannie, do you prefer to answer at this meeting? Or would you like to make a presentation at our next meeting in September?
So one of the things I, I want you to know is that one of our board members did reach out to Kevin. I spoke to him for more than an hour. Um, and we did let him know that he was not eligible to be a member because Inahaina Community Association are for residents of Inahaina. So he's not a resident. His mother was, but he is not. Uh, we did talk about the stream. We informed him what our goals were for the stream. But there are other, there are other aspects of the stream that we're working on that did not align with what Kevin was interested in. So, um, you know, I think I come before this board with what we're working on. So I don't see us as being so private, as you don't know. We've been vocal about our protection of the properties, of getting preservation, of, um, you know, working with developers to make sure that the, the existing homes are safe when they build. So I, I don't think that we've been at all non-transparent. We've come to the board with our perspectives and asked for your support. So I think you know the issues that we're working on. I, I don't know what else you would like us to talk about because we've, we've been very insistent on, on what we, what the community is asking us to do and what we're doing. So I, I just want you to know that the issues we bring before this board are because the neighbors who are most affected have come to us. And, and then, and that's what we're working on. So, you know, I think we've been very open about that.
Shelley, did you have any specific questions that she didn't answer? Would you like any more information?
More information? I, I would like to know who's representing the Inahaina community. Because genuinely, I've only ever seen Jeannie and I'm part of the community. Um, I, I think it would be interesting to have information on the members, how you can join easily. I've noticed their website's not been updated in years. So perhaps we could get more information on the meetings, who's being represented. Um, yeah, that kind of thing. I think it'd be really helpful to be more inclusive of the entire neighborhood.
So we do, when we, when we have issues, you know, I mean, it's been very difficult because we usually have community meetings, but because of the pandemic, we didn't do that. But we do have newsletters that go out and we're 100% volunteer, right? So I agree that we haven't been keeping up with our website, but it's very difficult with, we have a board of eight members. They're all working members. They all do their share of the work that comes up before us. Um, and they've been very generous with the time. So we, we, you know, work on the priorities then. And if we can have someone who would like to volunteer to keep up the website, we'd be more than happy to do that. But right now, we're just, um, you know, we do that when we can. And like I said, we do have newsletters that go out. But because of the pandemic, we've been limited to what we could, could do as far as community meetings. So we, we can do that. I think Shelley, I think you might have. I don't know if you've inquired about that, but we do have, on the website, we have an application. If you're not a current member, we do have application for, for people to fill out.
Seen that. I've seen that. I just, it all seems a bit dodgy, kind of like because it is so dated.
Right.
That's why I question. But no, I've, it's, uh, and I've never received a newsletter, never.
Yes, um, sometimes we send an entire mailing to the entire valley, but that's very expensive. We send newsletters to our members, so not all residents are members. So that's, that's probably why you haven't received it. But, you know, we try to do as much as we can to let people know when there's a big general issue, we will send out to every home. And it's very expensive to do. And we also use other organizations like Inahaina Prepared to send out information. So, yeah.
I think it would be nice if we, if you could just give us, you know, a brief five-minute summary of, about the Inahaina Community Association, how people can, can join and, and, and support the, the concerns of the community that you, that you've been working on. Could you, would you be able to, to come to our next meeting in September? I can get together with you offline on that, but maybe, you know, more questions.
Be happy to, happy to. We have, I have all that information.
Okay, great. Yeah, that would be fantastic. Yes, thank you so much, Jeannie. Okay, will do. I saw another hand up. Sherri Spangler?
Yes, thank you. I do not want to discount the comments by Alfred or Kevin. I'm sure they have some concerns, but I don't comprehend them, but I'm sure that they will work them out. But I do have to say something about Jeannie Ota and the Inahaina Community Association. I've been on this neighborhood board since 1989. That's like almost 35 years. And I have never seen any community, community association work so hard for specific issues. They don't work on everything, but they pick specific ones. They get people, they get 200, 300 people to come to our neighborhood board meetings in the past, which were held in the Inahaina Cafeteria, Inahaina Elementary School Cafeteria. They have, they deal with things on such a deep, comprehensive level. And they've done it for so many years. And I, in my little, you know, existence of 35 years on this board, I've learned so much from the Inahaina Community Association. And when I help other communities on Oahu, all around this island, I tell them, when they tell me we're nobodies, we don't have any power, we don't have any say, how can we do anything? I tell them about how the Inahaina Community Association has fought lost issues and won. They've been my preaching point, that nothing, no hope is lost. So if you guys have issues with the, you know, talk to her, set up a meeting. They have, you know, I can only say that being on the board this long, I've seen how good they are and the, and the good that they've done. And I guess you have to be there 35 years to, to know it. But I just had to say that. And I, I know that I'm sure Alfred has valid concerns to talk about with Jeannie and Kevin too. I don't know about that. I just have to say my viewpoint on Jeannie. And I worked with other people on that board, five other people. They're all, they work like, like, they work like dogs. They work so hard and really get the people out. So anyway, that's my word for them and I learn a lot from them. So thank you very much. Thank you, Jeannie. Bye.
Thank you, Sherri. Are there any other questions from the public or comments? Okay, let's move on to, oh, partner, go ahead. Partner?
Oh, sorry. Mahalo, Chair. I just wanted to bring it to the community's attention that if, for those who haven't heard, you know, in regards to invasive species, you know, Oahu, as well as other neighbor islands, is having a vast growth in little fire ants, as well as other invasive species. So I just wanted to bring to the board and the public's attention that, you know, earlier in the meeting, it was mentioned about community outreach and letting people know about the board. I know other boards have started utilizing the funds allocated from NCO to utilize those funds to allocate it for production of fire ant test kits. And then the board then goes to distribute the test kits either at community events or in any way the board is possible. Therefore, you know, the community outreach aspect of it is covered as well as, you know, the board offering services in some way, shape or form to the community.
Oh, cool. We want to hear more about that. Okay. Malia Marquez? Malia? Malia Marquez? Okay, Mia Lisa, you have a name almost like that, but not, not really. You want to try again? Go ahead. Oh, I still can't hear you. Oh, no. Again, Malia Marquez, you have your hand up. Hi. Malia, do you have, did you want to ask us something or bring up something? Malia Marquez? Okay, having trouble. All right. Sherri, do you have something additional to bring up?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I not take my hand down? I'm terribly sorry. This computer tonight is, is got the best.
Okay, understand. Let us move to officials' reports. Representative for Mayor Rick Blandiardi, I think he wasn't able to attend, but Judy Ann is going to summarize some updates that he, that the mayor sent in.
Okay, aloha Chair and aloha all boards. I'm doing a mayor's report. It's just a memorandum. So the mayor's monthly highlights are protecting our paradise. Earlier this summer, the city entered into an agreement with Matt Levy Security to provide a specialized security team to enhance public safety efforts along Kuleo Beach. These additional efforts combined with the continued success of the Safe and Sound Program are creating friendlier, safer and more secure, um, security in Waikiki. The mayor announces key hires in July. Mayor Blandiardi announced key additions to the city's cabinet leadership team. Jean Albano will join the Department of Facility Maintenance and Dita Hollyfield will join the Department of Enterprise Services. Both are director designate. And let's see, Skyline first month ridership. The city is pleased to announce that the Skyline has seen 1,000, 170,185 riders during its first month of operations. With students heading back to school, residents have more reason than ever to try the Skyline. Affordable housing in Honolulu on July 17th. Governor Josh Green signed an emergency proclamation to combat the escalating affordable housing crisis in Hawaii. Now, a collaborative effort by the state and all four coun, uh, country, counties will seek to streamline the regulatory process for the development of 50,000 housing units over the next five years. Representatives from the city's mayor's office and the Department of Planning and Permanencing will work with the state to build a Beyond Barriers Working Group to fast-track affordable housing. Keeping our neighbors safe, safely housed. As housing costs increase, some of the, some of our neighbors are struggling more than ever to pay their rent and utility bills. To reach these households, eight community events for the Rental and Utility Relief Program were held this summer along with the partners. These events are, were part of a temporary reopening this summer, funded 25 million in state and local fiscal recovery funds. More than 600 Oahu families applied for short-term rent and utility to help these events and has helped, and, um, the Rental Utility and Relief Program has helped more than 18,000 Oahu families stay safely housed during and after the pandemic. There's more on www.wonowahu.org/newsletter. The Real Property Tax Credit Program. Let's see. The Department of Budget and Fiscal Services Real Property Tax Division wants to let homeowners know that the Real Property Tax Credit Program and the action and the city council took to increase, sorry, took to increase the income limit for this program from 60,000 to 80,000. This is a $20,000 increase, a lot, which allows a large number, a large number of homeowners to apply for this tax credit. You can go to www.honolulu.gov/treasury. And, um, let's see. Proposed water rate increases. Every five years, the Board of Water Supply, or BWS, reviews its current rate schedule and structures as part of the cost of service study. BWS operates, operations are funded by ratepayers. These rates fund capital improvement projects, pipe and pump replacement and repair, facility maintenance, water quality testing and conservation, and watershed management. The Assembly, uh, I'm sorry, Assembly Autonomous Agency of the City in Kali, Honolulu, BWS does not receive any funding from the property tax collected by the city. Let's see. So if you're unable to have BWS present during the critical issues, there are three meetings in August. Monday, August 14th, at Benjamin Parker Elementary from 6:00 to 8:30. Tuesday, August 15th, Japanese Culture Center, 6:00 to 8:30. And Wednesday, August 16th, in Kapolehale, from 6:00 to 8:30. All of the, all of the memorandums for the mayor will be on our new Google Drive for the board. So does anybody have any questions or comments?
I just have a comment that the Board of Water Supply is going to discuss its new five-year rate schedule at our next meeting in September. Partner, I see your hand up.
Mahalo, Chair. Judy, since John isn't here, can you, can you send a request to DPR? This is in regard, it doesn't, it's not necessarily for our community, but members of our community encountered this. There was a number of body boarding and surf contests held at Vava Malu over a few weekends. And each weekend, all bathrooms were shut down and locked for the entirety of the weekend.
Hmm, okay.
So we had residents, you know, residents from all over the island, you know, sad to say, utilizing bushes, utilizing trees, you know, making friends with other people who live in Kalama Valley, Hawaii Kai, and neighboring neighborhoods. Hey, can you run me to your house so I can use bathroom, so I can shower? Yeah, so if you can, if you can just forward that to John and DPR and see if we can get a response by next meeting, that'd be great.
Sounds good. This is last week, yeah? Last weekend or this past weekend?
No, 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 no. This is, what, we're in, this was in July. There was two, two events where, where contest organizers got permits for, to utilize Half Point and Sandy's at Vava Malu for the entire weekend. So from Friday to, to the ending of Sunday. And for the entirety of the weekend, um, the bathrooms, both men's and women's, were shut down. Yeah, at both, at both bathroom locations. From my understanding, after talking to event organizers, they were informed by DPR that the reason, that the reason bathrooms were locked were over COVID concerns. Even though it's an outdoor event. Even though it's an outdoor event.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you could get me the dates of those weekends, that would be awesome too. I appreciate it.
Okay. Is Dave, Dave Day here for Governor Josh Green?
Yes, he is. I'm gonna have him sit, uh, where I am right now.
Hello, Board. Uh, Dave Day.
Hi, Dave.
Hey, and, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, Chair Burkert and, uh, Resident Multern. I happened to get some strawberries at my office in, in June. I think, no, it was June or July, but, uh, we all ate it in my office and we all thank you very much. So thank you very much for that kind gesture. The, uh, one of the things I had is a follow-up. Um, this is actually something that was a question in May. Um, and it was actually something that came up during, um, the residents' questions, or pardon me, during the, uh, the open question time. Um, and it related to, uh, the, uh, proposed development or a sale of land behind lawns, um, involved Puu Honoa, uh, Honoa Owalupe. Um, and I know that, um, there was one individual here today who was representing them, the individual who I spoke to, and I had a very nice conversation with was Mia Lisa Otis, who I believe is a resident of the area. Um, one of the things that came up was, um, uh, issues relating to the State Historic, uh, Preservation Division, Department of Land and Natural Resources. I spoke with, um, representatives of DLNR. Um, if someone, um, from that organization, and I'll just put this in the minutes, is able to, um, contact me and my contact is atg dot P I O and provide me with a tax map key number or a street address of the property in question, I think I might be able to provide more information at the next meeting. Um, at this time, I'm not able to provide anything substantive on what was given at that time because we need a little bit more information. Um, and I'm happy to contact people offline. Um, beyond that, I just wanted to note that we had a great event, um, at Washington Place. Um, I believe it was last week, um, regarding the return of the Queen's standard. This was something that was spearheaded by the administration, specifically the State Archives and the Department of the Attorney General. And I'm very glad to have, um, that, uh, the Department of the Attorney General was able to play a part in this. Um, it was a wonderful, um, uh, presentation and it's a great artifact to have returned to Hawaii in a very historic occasion. Um, beyond that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Do you have any questions for Dave Day? Um, so who will provide him with the information regarding, I mean, I think this is regarding the antenna tax, um, the antenna application that were, if we need the tax map key, or was this regarding something else? I'm sorry, I was.
This is actually follow-up from, uh, a discussion in May. Um, that was, it was actually an extended discussion on the record, um, regarding, um, land. Um, I believe that the Aina Haina Community Association was involved. I'm sorry, I don't have all of the details. I'm trying to get to the bottom of it. Um, Mia Lisa Otis, um, uh, was the individual who, um, spoke at that meeting. Um, and the organization that, um, that she represented was Puu Honoa Owalupe.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I just got a little comment from Mia Lisa. She's gonna follow up with me. So again, that's atg dot P I O at hawaii dot gov.
Thank you so much for following up. Um, does anyone have questions for Dave? For Governor? Okay, Partner, go ahead. Partner Akiona.
Mahalo Chair. Hi, Dave. Just real quick, I was interested in if you could ask the DOE, Department of Ed, on why exactly, um, students who are homeschooled cannot transfer their credits once, once they hit the high school level? I had a couple of, of residents who homeschooled their kids who were looking to possibly, um, send their kids back to, um, Kalani. Asked me, when they researched it, the school informed them that none of their homeschool credits would transfer. And these kids are going into their junior year. So based on that, based on that logic, um, the, the student would have to restart from freshman year at a, at a, at the age of a junior.
So, so if I understand the question, um, the question is, um, and I don't, obviously, I don't know the answer right now. Um, the question is, is that several of your, uh, constituents have expressed concern or grave concern, I suppose, that they're, uh, they're homeschooling their children through the freshman sophomore year. They want to go to public school in junior year and it's, you're understanding that they, they're basically two years of their schooling will not count and they have to go back to freshman year. Okay?
Correct. Based on, yeah, apparent from their research that supposedly there's a state law that, that prohibits DOE from accepting, um, any homeschool transcripts um, within, for that, for that type of transition at the high school level.
Okay, so I will follow up, um, and try to get an answer for you for next time.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it.
Kevin, do you have a question for Dave?
Yes, I, uh, for him to put the email in the chat. I think he did that. For his, to put place his contact information in the chat.
I'll do that right now.
Uh, you mentioned it, but, hey, thank you.
Sure.
Partner, you still have your hand up. Do you have another question?
Hello, my, sorry Chair, nope.
Okay.
So, uh, so just if, so when you email me at this, uh, email address, if you just put in the subject line Coolioo Neighborhood Board or Coolioo, so, and then I'll, I'll know what it's about. I appreciate it.
Dave, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, City Councilman Chair Tommy Waters and/or Adam Do. Now, representing yourself is, is, is much better. We really are excited to be able to talk to you directly. Thank you so much for attending. If I knew you were coming, I would have made the extra effort to come down in person to the Oahuai, but I had no idea.
Well, first of all, congratulations to you all on winning your election. Um, I did have the opportunity to speak at the swearing-in ceremony. I saw a few of you there. But it, it was a really cool event and I'm hoping that we can do that at Honolulu Halei um, for the next election because it was really neat to see hundreds of neighborhood board members at this event. One of the things I talked about was I myself was on the Kailua Neighborhood Board back in the eighties when I was twenty-one years old. And I, I really value what it, what it is that the board does. You know, starting off, I want to talk about Board of Water Supply. You know, our water is so important to us and after talking to Manager Lau, we decided, like, council, working with the mayor's office, to put twenty-five million dollars towards a desalinization plant in the event that our water is ruined by, um, not only, not only the Red Hill fuel tanks, but also PFAS chemicals that are now leaching into our groundwater. It's actually really, really disturbing. And I want to let everybody know that we're not gonna let this go and we're gonna work hard to ensure that the Navy cleans up their, their mess. The problem I see it is that a lot of the fuel has leached into the ground rock. And then at some point it will get down into the water table and that is deeply concerning. So the governor, the mayor, myself, House Speaker, Senate President, and, and other legislators are batting together, working together to ensure that we hold them accountable. You know, we talked about Kaholelave where the military bombed the heck out of that island, breaking the water table and the military, the, the United States government gave Hawaii four hundred million dollars. And of course, anybody who has ever been to Kaholelave knows that it's nowhere near cleaned up and the water table can, it's almost inhabitable there now. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna let this slide. We're gonna be vigilant about that. Um, housing is the next thing I wanted to talk about. I know the governor for, did an emergency proclamation and working towards building more affordable housing. The city council is keenly aware of that problem. Um, we've actually approved, since the mayor came on board, working with the council, over seven thousand units of which five thousand of them are affordable. We continue to wrestle with the, the definition of affordable because what the state and the county uses is the Housing and Urban Development definition. And to me, that, that doesn't work for, for Hawaii. But we continue to try to address the affordable housing need by offering incentives to developers if they're willing to build affordable housing. That works to a, a certain extent, but we've got to do more and figure out a better way to do this. Because DED did a study saying that we need twenty-five thousand more units on our, on our interstate, of which most of it is in Honolulu at all price levels, but mostly at the sixty and eighty percent AMI level. That's folks earning anywhere between forty to eighty thousand dollars a year. I do want to emphasize what was read earlier on the mayor's, like, uh, the mayor's presentation, that we passed Bill Thirty-seven. Bill Thirty-seven is super important. There's a program in the city that if you made sixty-five thousand dollars or less, your property tax is limited to three percent of your income. We raised that in Bill Thirty-seven to eighty thousand dollars. So if you, if you're, anybody on the title makes, even if you have to add up their incomes, if you make eighty thousand dollars or less, your property tax is capped at three percent of your income. So please, 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 if this applies to you, apply. The deadline is October second, October second. So I'm hoping people, we gotta get the word out and, um, go through the Budget and Fiscal Services website and, and click on, it's pretty self-explanatory. And if anybody needs help filling out the forms, feel free to call my office and we're happy to assist you. We also passed Bill Forty. Bill Forty raises the homeowner's exemption for everyone from a hundred thousand dollars to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And for tuna, for seniors, from a hundred and forty thousand to a hundred and sixty thousand. So that's automatic. If you already have a homeowner's exemption, then that's automatic. It's gonna kick in next year. The other thing, I just want to remind folks, because it happens every year. Some, sometimes your spouse, people's spouse will pass away and the surviving spouse is not on, on, has not applied for the homeowner's exemption. I would put both, both family members on the homeowner's exemption because every year I get calls about folks who now are paying residential aid taxes, which is about three times the amount of, uh, as if you didn't have, or as if you had a homeowner's exemption. And I've been working with Budget and Fiscal Services to try to find a solution for those people. And I've actually introduced three bills right so far to try to address this. And so far, Budget and Fiscal Services has shot it down and we're taking a really hard line on that. I'm not giving up though. I got another idea and I'm gonna introduce legislation, but in the meantime, please, everybody, if you're not on the homeowner's exemption, your spouses, please also apply. I got a letter from DTS today, Department of Transportation Services, about raised crosswalks and those signs that go in the middle of the road across from, I, uh, um, outside of Aina Haina Elementary. The good news is they did a, a traffic study, determined that what the community has been saying all along, that people are going really fast at that area. So they approved this, uh, the raised crosswalks and the signs in the streets. So that's really good news, but I'll keep on top of that to, to try to get that done just as soon as possible. Other good news, I met with the fire chief a couple of weeks ago and he told me that they gave up their plan to build the new fire station at Aina Haina Elementary. So they're gonna stay put. Um, and I thought that was really good news because remember we had a town hall meeting a couple of years ago and a lot of people attended it. So, so they listened to us, which was great. You know, we talk about affordable housing and, and creating more density. But when you look at the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan that we all worked really hard on, you know, there's really not much more room for continued growth in East Honolulu. So we gotta be real vigilant and pay attention because if developers want to build more housing and more density in East Honolulu, we gotta remind them about the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan where we direct where we want the development. And quite honestly, in my, in our district, District Four, the only place that really was identified in the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan was above the Hawaii Kai Shopping Center. No place else. I do want to inform you that a couple other communities like Kahala, Kamaki, Kapohula and Diamond Head, they really like what we did in the whole East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan and they want to join us. So you're gonna hear a little bit more about this a, as things progress. When I approached the subject to DPP, they were quite upset about that. They didn't like the idea. But again, we want to limit the amount of development in these areas and we don't want high rises, um, in these areas. And, and that's the idea why I think they want to join the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan. Streams continue to be an issue in our district and stream cleaning. So a, as was mentioned earlier, there's a new designee for the Department of Facility Maintenance, Mr. Albano. So I met with Mr. Albano. I said, look, this is one of my priorities, to make sure that our streams are upkept and clean because we don't want it to be overgrown and have what happened a few years ago, which in my mind did contribute to the flood. You know, and I used to talk to the old director of DFM and he's like, no, the, the stream cleaning had nothing to do with the flood. Well, I disagree. We want it upkept. We want it done at least twice a year if possible. Um, so I'll keep on top of that and, and I'm making that a condition of his confirmation that he's gonna promise that he's gonna clean them and I'm gonna hold him to that. Um, lastly, I just wanted to point out that, that public safety continues to be a concern of all of ours. And this year, the city council put an additional forty million dollars into HPP's budget to help fight crime. Um, I, I say this today and I say it all the time, that a patrolling police officer is the best deterrent to crime. That's, that's my presentation. I'm available for questions, everyone.
Sherry Spangler? Sherry, the mic is yours.
Thank you. It's, I, this computer. Anyway, uh, it's great to see you Chair Waters at the meeting. I just wanted to warn you that at our meeting, I guess it was in June, we had a presentation by the, uh, some representatives from the Kahala Neighborhood Board about their desire to join the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan. And our board has many reservations about the wisdom of that due to the huge section of Kahala in their business district, which is all zoned B two, which is sixty feet. And, um, I, we've mentioned to them that no, their desire to come and join our East Honolulu group is not valid until Kahala has a statement from Bishop Estate, you know, that was the historic name. is not valid until Kahala has a statement from Bishop Estate, you know, that was the historic name, now Kamehameha Schools. That, a statement from them that they do not have intention to build and develop high rises or things, because I know through, through the years, um, we've heard of all kinds of things that they want to do in Tropicana Village, or in the strip mall areas, or in Kahala Mall itself, where they're having trouble keeping tenants in there. And we were worried that Kahala Mall, which is losing their, their leases up in it's about thirteen, fifteen years, I forget what. They might seek to do what Alamoana Shopping Center did by saying, oh, this doesn't pencil out unless we, and the corners of our area and the parking lots, redevelop as apartment buildings of some kind. So the, we don't know what Bishop Estate, if they might try to follow the same Alamoana Shopping Center mold. So I wanted you to know that our board did, uh, strong reservations about it. We're waiting for Kahala to come back and tell us further whether or not they've ever talked to Bishop Estate, Kamehameha Schools about their intentions or no intentions. Um, they haven't come back. And I know it's, they're trying to push gangbusters, and their document is interesting in as far as it says interesting things, but it never really makes the point. It never talks about the elephant in the room, which is Bishop Estate, Kamehameha Schools' intention of development. Um, so I just wanted you to be aware that they have that desire, but we have fought hard through the years. I, yeah, when I, I joined this board, as I've said earlier, in nineteen eighty-nine. I've joined Neighborhood Board, uh, number two. And one of the first things I talked about with DPP was about, well, gee, why doesn't Kahala, why aren't they able to join, why aren't they part of the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan? And they told me straight away, oh, no. East Honolulu is a sustainable communities plan. No development is planned really for that area. But in Kahala, in the business district, there are still plans afoot. And that's what I was told, you know, in the nineties, very early nineties. And nothing has changed, uh, since that time to, to make us feel or understand otherwise. So I had had that same thought, but then I was correctly told, you know, that their intentions may be something quite other than what, you know, and we don't want development. We've worked hard to keep it out of our, our corridor up to Hawaii Kai. So anyway, I just wanted you to be aware of our position here at the board. We're still waiting for Kahala to tell us something concrete, rather than the, the interesting document that really didn't go far enough, didn't have enough information in it. So I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
No, thank you very much, Stephanie. Uh, very, very good points. And I, I think it was listening to piles from the Kahala Neighborhood Board, probably here before you folks. They're just simply scared of overdevelopment as well. Um. As am I. And whenever I ask the M.A. Schools what their plans are for that area near what used to be called the Kahala Hilton, as well as Kahala Mall, mum's the word. I haven't really gotten any response from them. But they're concerned that, that that could result in more buildings. And the community just doesn't want that. They're part of the urban core. By the way, it's a huge lift. You'd have to change the urban core development plan, the general plan, and the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan. And all of that has to go through the Planning Commission and then back to the council. Um, so it's a huge lift. But really, I think they're coming from a good place. They're trying to preserve, which, which is a really, really, like Kamaki, a really, really quaint, um, community, and they're really afraid that a bunch of high rises might get built there.
Chair Burkert?
Yes.
Could I continue one statement per that, that discussion?
Go ahead.
Uh, one thing people have to remember is that Kahala has the B two zoning. They can go sixty feet in the mall. They can go sixty-two feet at Sagiios. They can go sixty-two feet if they wanted to tear down that strip mall where they built the brand-new Foodland and, and, you know, J. J. Dolan's or whatever. Um, they can, but if you tell them that they can't do that, they will then say, we're vested, you're downzoning us, and now we can sue you. That's, that's usually the, the trip. You, you can't, you can't deny us our rights. And, and that's, they, when they fought for that typo on the land use map of the, um, uh, not the golf course, the, uh, the Kahala Beach Apartments, there was a typo that said that they could go a hundred and fifty feet. And the typo was there for so long that Bishop Estate, Kamehameha Schools fought for, said, we're vested. We own that now. That, that's a proper a hundred and fifty feet. So, uh, I think it went through the legislature, or maybe even city council, and they properly brought it down to the old Hawaiian standard of nothing taller than a coconut tree, I'm hoping. But people don't understand that, uh, people, uh, companies that have zoning, right, that have zoning heights, they fight to keep them. And if you downs, if they consider them being downzoned, then they fight, they fight lawsuits. So sixty feet's what they can do legally, and that in and of itself is a nightmare, because you could look at the gas station, you know, across the street from Sagiios. Imagine all that area going sixty feet, which it hasn't even begun to yet. We fought them double-decking the entire parking lot at Kahala Mall. We won that one. And, you know, so they've had a lot of fights. Thank you. That, that's but that's consideration. You're very right. I'm sorry, I went on too long. Sorry.
Well, thank you. These are all, um, matters that people are very passionate about. Kevin, go ahead. You have a question for, um, for Council Chair Waters? Why, no, can't hear?
Uh, uh-oh. Um, I think I, I was unmuted when I should have been muted. Okay. Um. Thank you, Mr. Waters, for stopping by, um, my house when you run for office being accessible and, and also stopping by the mom's house. Really, really appreciate that. Um, I've been in the landscaping business for almost half a century, a little while. Uh, we do erosion control, vegetation management, and um, it's nice to hear that you're gonna be maintaining the stream twice a year. That's, that's, that's really good news. Um, what I was trying to share with the Aina Hana Community Association is that there are newer techniques to controlling vegetation or maintaining streams than the bulldozer. And, um, in that I was at one time a speaker for the city's, um, Stormwater, um, I guess, annual convention. Um, I'm, I try to stay abreast of current technology. Um, the work that was done in the stream actually contributed a lot of silt to the ocean, which is exactly what Mata Manalua has been trying to control. So you have one person controlling the silt and another, I guess, project kind of contributing. So it's kind of, uh, washing things out, which is not so good. Um, I took a video of a tractor with an articulating arm and a flail mower that could be driven down the stream to control the vegetation, basically mow the banks. One person could do it. Um, the tractors are owned by the city and the state. Um, when I, uh, sent information off to Aina Hana Community Association, I actually included a picture of one of those tractors that was actually idle in front of Roosevelt High School. Also, the landscape industry that I'm involved with has been experimenting with using steam, rather than chemicals, hot steam to kill vegetation. That way, the vegetation dies on the bank, the roots, and the, the, um, continues to hold the soil, um, and the green waste breaks down. But so no, no chemicals are used, but steam. Um, in other parts of the country, uh, goats are being used, um, maybe not the best, but I, I was surprised that, um, to learn that at one time they were used in some of the vacant city-owned properties in the back of Aina Haina. So there's, there's a lot of things, um, available, um, that would make it a little more economical. I was, though, disappointed, not so much how hard the city worked to clean the stream, but when I spoke to one of the, the crew leaders, he mentioned they were gonna treat the Halikoa dumps with a uh, product that was registered to use next to streams, but they said it didn't work. I've, I've checked on the product. Um, it's very effective. I don't think it was applied. So that means they're gonna have to recut Halikoa again. Um, when they hauled away the green waste, they used a seventy-five thousand ton truck, when if they had a chipper, a fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand pound truck, you know, would, would be more, more efficient. Other than they were, you know, using huge equipment that was unnecessary. So I was trying to share some of these concepts with the Aina Hana Community Association to kind of bring them up to, to speed with current technology. So, um, there is one other issue that I, I wanted to share with you. I, I've been working on range improvements at the Koko Head Range for probably fifteen or twenty years. Gathered about fifteen hundred signatures from people, many of them I spoke to personally. Um, I think even the range officers that I spoke to a couple of days ago said that I'd asked them about pukas, or holes, in the eyebrow. And I asked them where the bullets landed that were accidentally discharged, um, up into the air. They said it depends on the trajectory. So it means some might land in the ocean, some have landed in Kalamah Valley, some on the little, little home road. And the comment about the eyebrows being repaired, um, and the range opener, or little, the sea, the eyebrows, which are plastic, were painted, but they still have the pukas in them. They, they will not stop a bullet. Um, the, the eyebrows need to be a thicker material, so when you shoot, the bullet stays stuck in the ceiling, not in someone's home or car. Um, and as far as the range being open, I, I would say at the most, only, um, thirty percent of the range is open. The majority of it is actually closed. And not only is, uh, sixty percent of it closed, um, the days have been reduced to just weekends when it was open in the afternoons every day of the week. So smaller range, less hours. Um, seven hundred and fifty people have applied for concealed carry permits. It's a little scary to have seven hundred and fifty people running around town with guns that don't have a place to practice. I'm hoping if they do pull the gun out of their pocket, just as the police practice there, they actually shoot or, or hit what they're aiming at. So having a public range that is safe to use and open to the public, I think is extremely important. Uh, I'd be more than happy to send you, um, I guess, sketches, schematics, and information on both. Um, I find it therapeutic to do letters and drawings and schematics and include pictures. So I'll, I'll get those off to you. Thank, thank you.
That'd be great, Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, John Simons, go ahead.
Oh, hi. Uh, thank, yes, can you hear me? Okay? Um, uh, uh, Chair Waters, thanks very much, uh, for your presentation. Also, I wanted to thank the city for its actions in, uh, uh, clearing up the, uh, um, Wailupae Stream. It doesn't meet, uh, uh, meet the, um, specifications of all the residents, but it got the job done. It got things moving. And, um, I, I, the request I've had for a long time is a simple one. And I wonder why the city cannot, um, develop a, a fairly clear and concise statement for the benefit of the residents in the area as to why the management of the, uh, stream is so complicated, why jurisdiction has to be shared among different city departments, and, um, and why the stream is, uh, has one set of, um, maintenance standards uh, for the part from the, the bridge to the ocean, and another from the part to the bridge up into the, uh, mountains. Uh, items like that would go a long way towards helping people in the neighborhood understand the somewhat complex nature, um, of, of the stream. I just want to throw in a plug for the AE Corp., which is a consulting firm with the city, which I think has done a lot of really valuable research, uh, in, uh, managing the stream. Thanks very much for the city's effort this area.
Thank you, John.
Jeannie Ota?
Thank you. Um, Chair Waters, may I request that, um, that you take the, um, suggestions of Kevin Malkern on the stream cleaning methods to the relevant city agencies, or even, you know, or to your aides? Because, as you know, the Aina Hana Community Association has no say in the manner with which the stream is cleaned. We just ask the city to clean it. We don't tell the city how to. So, um, and we don't have the authority to do so. So some of those ideas, um, I would like to redirect, um, to either your office or to the relevant city agency. Probably DFM, right?
Yeah. No, no, that makes sense. Um, whatever it is we decide, I gotta run that through the Director Albano. Um, yeah, not a problem. But I'm hoping, I'd like to learn more about it.
Right. So if, um, if, maybe if Kevin can, could work with you directly? Because we, telling us about it is not helpful, right? We're not, we're not the right organization to do that. But I do, I do notice that from the research I've done since the, um, nineteen seventies, stream maintenance has been the biggest issue with, um, with preventing flooding. And in fact, in the two thousand and eighteen flood, as you know, um, the city lost, right? Because the court decided that it was the city that should have maintained and did not. So the residents who sued were allotted, were allotted more than two million dollars. So in this case, it was stream maintenance. And I, and I think, um, DFM needs to know that. Thank you.
No, I agree. And part of my job is approving those settlements. And that's tax-free money. And had a little bit of preventative maintenance been done, perhaps we would have saved not only property, but a lot of money.
Well, Council Chair Waters, thank you for all that you're doing for our community. We really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you, Chair Burkert. Appreciate you all, too.
Look forward to catching you in person next time.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you.
I see Teresa Ng, Senator Stanley Chang's representative. Teresa, thank you for being patient and holding on there. We, um, please update us on what's happening in Senator Chang's office.
Okay, yeah, no, my pleasure. Um, so I just put a number of things into the chat. First, there's a lot of, of conversation about the emergency proclamation on housing that was signed by the governor last week. So Senator Chang arranged a webinar with, um, Nani Wadere, the Chief Housing Officer, on August ninth at one P.M. So, um, if anyone has time to attend, register at the link. Secondly, the Hawaii Kai Lions Club is hosting a recycling drive on August nineteenth. Um, I know it's more south than your area, but if you guys have time, or if you guys need someone to get rid of things for fall cleaning, um, you can contact the Hawaii Kai Lions. Um, third, the, the E.V. Coast, um, could be a state park with the passage and signing of Bill twelve fifty-four. And that coast spans three hundred forty acres across East Honolulu. So that's exciting news for the community. We also have our August newsletter on Senator Chang's website, or we can chat. Um, and we continue with our constituent postcard, um, to fill out online at this link. And every week, Senator Chang, um, sends out a housing newsletter, and it has news articles about what's going on in the housing world in Hawaii, in the mainland, and across the, across the world. So if you're interested, you can sign up at that link as well. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes, any question for Senator Chang? Thank you so much, Teresa.
Thank you.
Okay, um, if no questions at this time, may I ask Mark Casham's representative to join us? I, I don't recognize the name there. Kimberly used to come. Is
I'm here.
There he is, that's why. Hey.
Hello, everybody.
Aloha.
I'm, I wanna start off by saying thank you very much for the strawberries.
You're welcome.
And I actually brought strawberries for the people that came in person over here to share with everybody else for coming, so. Um, unfortunately, so, unfortunately, people on Zoom were can't partake in the strawberries. So please, guys, everybody that's here, please grab some.
Uh-huh.
Um, last week, we had Hawaii's sister state with, um, with Japan. So Hawaii has six sister state relationships with Japan. Um, I was involved in setting up the sister state between Hawaii and Hokkaido. And that has, that was about five years ago. Actually, Ken Ito, when he was the Chair of International Relations, we both set that up. And that relationship between Hokkaido and Hawaii has evolved to become a very good relationship. That's, there's a lot of Hokkaido companies that are coming into Hawaii. Um, you might see all the Hokkaido diamonds going up. We might see all the Hokkaido domes going up all over the place. And I'm real grateful for that. Because for one, I lived in Japan for ten years. And that was one of the crux of why we did, why we started to do that. On another note, I wanted to mention that it, the little fire ants was brought up earlier. The state put in five hundred thousand dollars for the ant lab and for to help combat the little fire ants. If there is any detected in our neighborhood, please let me know. I'm not the one that's gonna eradicate it. I really don't know how that's done, but it's Department of Ag and CETA that are heading that. So if you find it, please let me know. So we can forward that information to CETA and we can help eradicate it from eastern Honolulu. Because when you get bit, I got bit by them. And it's thing. So that is basically most, most of my report. And if you have any questions.
Any questions for Representative Hashem? We'll think about some and send them to you. Thank you so much for being with us. Casey, last but not least.
Good evening, Chair. I hope you folks can see my screen here.
Yeah.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank all the board members and especially Chair Burket and Karen Mookin for the delicious strawberries that were delivered to our director's office in my office in early June. I apologize for not being in my office when Chair Burket and Kevin came to deliver the strawberries. I was attending a two and a half day conference in Waikiki at that time, but I really appreciate your kindness and hospitality. I received the Neighborhood Board Resolution from Judy Anne on June the fourteenth. Yeah, so. Okay, responding to comments in the resolution, first of all, install red light cameras in colonial highway. Location will be considered after the pilot project is completed in November twenty twenty-four. And if the twenty twenty-five legislature will authorize the expansion of the program. Okay, so we, I guess, for you folks, Neighborhood Board, if you folks talk to your elected officials to encourage adopt the full adoption of the program in, during the twenty twenty-five legislation and expand it statewide, we can start addressing other areas within the state that may consider red light running. The next one, increase in the police enforcement for the thirty-five miles per hour. Currently, we have to defer that to the Highland Police Department. HPD has speed trailers that they can set up throughout colonial highway to encourage speeders not to slow down. I would recommend to, to the board to work with their elected officials to pass a law for speeding pilot program that will be similar to our red light camera pilot program. It would, it would be kind of like a replay of our old mobile van cam program back in the nineteen nineties, but better to address the problem that we had with the van cam in the nineteen nineties. The technology that is currently being used in our two-year red light camera pilot program can capture how fast the car is traveling through the intersection. So we have the technology to capture driver's speed on colonial highway if we can set up this system along the highway. Also, under Act sixty-three that the governor signed into law, Senate Bill five eighty-eight relating to excessive noise, which directs the highways division to implement a two-year pilot program. It will provide additional info, I will provide additional information about the program at future Neighborhood Board meetings. The next concern was placing twenty-five miles school zone signs in all school zones on the highway corridor. This portion of colonial highway is classified as an expressway designed to facilitate many vehicles efficiently move, moving between two destinations like Kahala and Hawaii Kai. Plus, you know, they have multiple lanes and are intended for faster travel with a higher speed limit, like thirty-five miles per hour, rather than twenty-five miles. So reducing the speed limit to twenty-five during school hours will significantly impede the traffic flow and further increase congestion, since there are many traffic signals along colonial highway. But we'd like to stress that all crosswalks along colonial highway within the Kulu, Kalaniki area are signalized and provide protected pedestrian crossing opportunities. So therefore, the DOT does not recommend installing these signs. But again, we do recommend pushing for a pilot speed program and eventually installing these permanent speed cameras along colonial highway. The next one, installing double fine zone signs in school districts done in Manoa. The roadways in Manoa schools are, are local two-lane roads that have lower traffic volumes and speed limits than colonial highway that is classified as an expressway with multiple lanes. Installing these fines in Manoa is only effective, you know, if you have the HPD officers enforcing that. Again, you know, HDOT does not recommend installing these double fine zones. And again, we do recommend pushing for the pilot speed program and eventually installing these permanent speed cameras along Cal Highway. Next, a learning concern was to improve pedestrian safety along colonial highway. Install more yellow pedestrian crossing signs with arrows at frequently used intersections. Installing yellow pedestrian crossing signs at every signalized intersection along colonial highway where there are designated crosswalks is not in compliance with the national recognized manual on uniform traffic console devices or MUTCD. HDOT is concerned about future litigation if we install additional signs not recommended by the MUTCD at only certain locations and not all similar locations throughout the island and throughout the state. Placing more see me flags at crosswalks, especially in school zones on the highway. Again, HDOT adheres to national standards when implementing roadway devices, ensuring compliance with established guidelines, which will help minimize future litigation against the state, especially if we do not install these see me signs at all similar locations. Also, the state's liability will increase if these flags are not maintained. And then finally, for establishing regular landscape maintenance scheduled to maintain visibility of the signs. Again, HDOT has a regular landscaping maintenance schedule, trees are trimmed once per year or as needed. Shrubs are done once per month and trees and shrubs are scheduled for trimming this month in August. Next year, the decreased traffic congestion on colonial highway. Again, our response is the DOT is, is in the process of upgrading all traffic signal controls, controllers and optimizing the traffic signal timing along colonial highway from Wanacore Street to linear home road. The project is, we hope to start evaluation of these existing conditions and signal timing in May of twenty twenty-four and hope to implement and fine tune the signals by August twenty twenty-four. So we hope that the Neighborhood Board can be patient with us. Also, again, same thing here with the other traffic congestions. Again, we're updating traffic signals and hopefully can be patient with us when the project starts in sometime in the spring of next year. And again, this one here, same thing too. I know is another problem about the traffic in the morning. We hope you can be patient while we update our traffic controllers and optimize the traffic signal timing. And then here, as for DCing traffic congestions, it's concerning Kalaniki and concerned about Kalani High School, excuse me. Again, we recommend the Neighborhood Board invite the DOE representatives or the school principals to the next meeting to discuss their concerns. Or we can ask the elected official to assist us with the reaching out to the DOE. Again, if they bring these DOE representatives and principal to the board meeting, I guess, John Hoochie and myself from the state and county traffic division can assist in responding to any questions that the DOE members or the school have. And then finally here, the last concern was the HOV stop sign. Yes, HDOT will prepare a work order to install a stop gear on red signs for all the intersections along HOV route. Again, this is to be consistent. So there's no problems we have in future litigation. And that concludes my presentation. Do I have any questions?
Casey, thank you so much, you and your team for carefully looking at, for carefully considering the requests and, and suggestions in our resolution. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome. And again, we were looking at technology, especially artificial intelligence, where technology changed so much that we hope that we can implement this new technology in the future as it comes aboard.
Well, as expected, we have some, some questions for you. Sherri, go ahead.
Yes, hi Casey. Thank you for all your hard work. Question, many questions, actually. Could you cop, is that copyable, what you've sent, or can you, can you email that to us?
Or by PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Just your comments, yeah.
Okay, yes. I'll tell you, I'll send it to Judy Anne and she can distribute it.
Yeah, that's good. And duck, three questions. When was, when was, when was Kalani Anioli Highway termed to be an expressway?
I guess I would, I would have to go double check with our traffic engineers. They were providing me the information.
Yeah.
It's, you know, we have, we have our freeways, you know, H one, H two. And I guess, you know, the state roads mainly are concerned about the major thoroughfares that move a lot of traffic from one location to another. As compared to the city takes care of the local roads within the designated destination site. So I think I was concerned this, they mentioned what's press way, but I went along with it.
You know, you, you know, and our board knows Kalani Anioli Highway is a residential corridor. It's not a freeway, which some people have referred to it as, you know, the freeway going to Hawaii Kai. And it's an expressway. I'd like to know the legal Department of Transportation term for expressway and what the speed limit is for that. Do you know what the speed limit is for Kalani Anioli Highway?
Again, it mentioned to me thirty-five miles an hour.
Yeah, thirty-five. And why isn't, you know, that's not enforced. So they're actually doing sixty out there. And that's why it's dangerous. Nobody's enforcing. And DOT isn't doing anything, you know, the police aren't helping, DOT isn't really helping, because now you're calling it an expressway. And we really, actually, I guess we'll have to write you, you know, next month and talk to you further about it. But I would love to have you get back to us about when, when Kalani Anioli Highway, a residential corridor of thirty-five miles per hour, was termed an expressway. Because I've never, you know, I've been on the board since nineteen eighty-nine and I have dealt with DOT through all the people who've been on the head of DOT. And I've never heard of it being called an expressway. I've heard of it being incorrectly called a freeway. But, and by the way, there is a sign out there that says twenty-five miles per hour in a school limit speed. It's out there on the highway outside Kalani High School.
Okay.
Historically, always, historically, it's always been there. And the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit signs and double fee signs were not just up in Manoa. They were down there on, down by Central Union, Baritania, down there. It's a Shriners Hospital, Central Union, down there. And we also saw them on King Street outside Washington Intermediate today. New signs all over the place saying twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, school zone limit.
Sherri, can you, since we're fifteen minutes overtime, could you just briefly state your questions? And so we can, well, you know, so everyone can get in their questions, Kevin.
I just wanted, just wanted Casey to tell me when they termed Cal Highway Kalani, Kalani Anioli as an expressway. When was that created? And do they acknowledge that it's a residential corridor?
I'm pretty sure I made an error. We know of traffic range. I'm pretty sure we made an error, but I'll confirm with that.
Thank you. That's a big error. Thank you. And is there, did you actually, are you going to be looking at the exit times from from Wailei and Waoholo and from Halemao, Halemau Ma'o?
Yeah, my, my understanding is that when this new project goes on board, as it is implemented, they will be looking at the whole corridor or the intersections. He's trying to adjust the timing.
And one of the, one of the things that's very interesting is that the community, people have written in, that I have historically from our Neighborhood Board minutes, the community up there in New Valley and Kuleo Oo have complained that DOT only concerns themselves with the drive time from Hawaii Kai into town. They don't care about the safety concerns of the people who live on the corridor and who live in the valleys along the corridor. And that was an express comment. And I've got, I've got the letters. You can't just say you're trying to speed the traffic. You can't do that. We all, it's a residential corridor. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Thank you. Okay, Kevin, go ahead. Hey, can't hear.
Okay, thank you for your patience. I, I think some of you might have missed a great community event that Jean Ward hosted Tuesday. It was called Safe Streets Town Hall Meeting. And he had people from the police department, DOT and the city, but it was a superb meeting. One of the things I, I shared at it was that my daughter, as many of our kids have moved away, she's in Seattle. And some of the things my daughter shared with me is she's learned some things there. One that if you make a rolling stop at a stop sign, when you're, when you're going right, you get a ticket in the mail. If you go more than twenty-five miles an hour in a school zone, you get a ticket in the mail. If you pass a school bus that has stopped unloading students, you get a ticket in the mail, you know. And when, when I left the workshop that night at about, I guess, eight, eight o'clock, I came to the stop sign on Hawaii Kai Drive and Kalani Anioli Highway. I believe the light was red when I got there. I stopped on the, in the right lane. The person behind me went into the left lane and passed me and turned right in front of me on the red light. But what it made me realize is I think God was telling me, I better speak up before someone else dies. Dorothy, when she, my daughter, when she was going to Holy Nativity, she received a call from one of the school teachers, Elizabeth Keikoa. And I'm looking at a Star Bulletin article and about her and she was killed on the freeway. A person was going a hundred miles an hour and rear-ended her and killed her. And she had called my daughter just the night before, but my thought is if we implement the speed cams, not in twenty twenty-five or six or twenty thirty, but do it a little sooner, much like Renton has done where she lives. They did it three years ago. People that are driving a hundred on the freeway might have got a ticket, maybe for going five miles an hour, the speed limit going forty in a thirty-five, maybe getting a speed limit of going fifty in a forty-five mile zone. We might have discouraged them from, you know, basically taking out one of our, our school teachers. But waiting two or three years and being sensitive to the individuals that are breaking the law is complete Looney Tunes, you know. So, but anyway, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Kevin. Well, without all your voices, we wouldn't, we, we wouldn't be a Neighborhood Board and be doing anything for our community. So I really appreciate you all being here. And please keep speaking up and, and hold our representatives accountable and find out what we as a community can do about these problems. Going into closing announcements, our next meeting will be at six thirty on Thursday, September seventh. And I look forward to seeing you all there. Judy Anne, do you have any closing comments? Did we forget any protocol?
No, I think we're all good. I know that I'm gonna have to, in the future, I'm gonna have to try and change the time here, the location. Because I know that he was only supposed to be, we're only supposed to be here until eight thirty. So I would, we would have to change that time, because we're already at the three hour mark. We're about ten minutes shy. We still gotta, we gotta break everything down. So I appreciate, I appreciate the time. But yeah.
Do you have enough leeway between now and September? Or should we, should we keep the same time that we've been meeting for September?
I will, I will talk to our office manager, Travis Saito, who does the management for the who does the management for the, the facilities that we have for all the boards. I can let him know that we're gonna start at six thirty here.
Okay, everyone, look at your agendas when they come out next month. Mahalo, everyone, and stay safe. Good night.
Good job.